Welcome to the February 8, 2016 State Planning Board hearing. We begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, in one nation, in one land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have any issues before we introduce board members? Emergency exits are either side of this room. Case of emergency, we're going to exit down to the ground floor in order of fashion. We're not going to use the elevators. Back rooms are to my left. I ask everybody to silence their cell phones this time, please. And if folks who need to have a conversation at all, we ask that you use one of the two conference rooms on your side of the chambers here. Introductions, my name is Wayne Blatt Jr., I'm the Plague Board Chairman. We also have Vice Chairman Jonathan Boyer Jr., members Robert Jacobson, Charles Valaco, Jonathan Korn, Jamie Mills, and Bill Tugby. We also have the Plating Director Suzanne Cahill. Assistant Planner is Kyle Haber. And we have Walter Women Nacker, who was the common council liaison for the Plating Board. Okay, we begin this meeting with an open public speaking. We allocate fifteen minutes for this, for this open public speaking. You don't necessarily have to do anything that's on the agenda tonight. Before we do that, I want to preface, if anybody wants to speak regarding item number three, which is ninety, in ninety-two, there's ninety-four, Pritch Street. It's one way to know that tonight is, we're only going to be discussing the matter with the lot line deletion. Any public comment this evening must be germane to that issue for the lot line deletion. We did have a public hearing on the proposed use of that property back in December of 2015. And at that time, the public was afforded the opportunity to speak on the issue. That's not the issue tonight, it's just the lot line deletion. That doesn't ever been decided until then or anything else, okay? That still has to, that remains to be seen. So whenever that does come forward this quarter, we will have an initial public hearing, which will allow people to speak on the matter. So if you want to save your breath tonight, we would appreciate it. You know, like I said, you will have an opportunity to speak, pro and con, so. Having said that, we do have the open public speaking, fifteen minutes. Anybody want to come to the mic? More than welcome. Okay. Moving on to item number two is the adoption of the January eleventh, 2016 Plague Board Minutes. Everybody's had an opportunity to peruse them. Anybody have any questions or comments? Good. At this time, we make a motion that we adopt the January eleventh, 2016 Plague Board Minutes on second. Second by Robert Jacobson, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, public hearings. Moving on to item number three is number ninety and ninety-two dash ninety-four, Pritch Street. This is a lot line deletion of lands of Game Development LLC, section block lot is fifty-six point twenty-six dash nine dash two point one and thirty-seven. Secret termination, zone C three, Ward five. Game Development LLC is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number three or something?
I would like to say so.
The record show the park owner is taking the podium.
Yeah, yeah, my name is Mark Reicher. I was a zoning enforcement officer for about twenty years until building safety. And when you had, in the zoning board, when you had a chase of properties, I don't know what this, probably a chase of properties, you could always use the parking next door. You could have, you know, that use. So evidently now, you're coming down on the guy because you want to delete the line, okay, to take a building for the parking next door, right?
Are we giving you the impression we're coming down on him?
Well, I don't know whether they're coming down on him. I just read the papers.
No, this is, this is just slavery.
You could, you could let it go. I mean, if, if.
Oh, this is just a formality. You know, you used to be the zoning enforcement officer. Anytime something is done with a lot line and subdivisions.
Okay, somebody brought it up.
Okay, it has to be, you know.
Somebody had to bring it up, okay. Well, what about reading the paper? Now you have the Corporation Council comes up with a meeting where the guy's going to have, let's say, clubs. It's a club or something like that. I don't get it. I don't get it. But a club is a club.
So we're, we're not talking about the use of the property?
Let's talk about the property line. Let's go back to the property line. The city of Kingston has an ordinance, and I took it when I, hired by Frank Hayne from seventy-five, okay. Old ordinances end up constitution, okay. Now, that's what a building inspector does. I don't know whether they got a building inspector today or not, but a building inspector should be making the determinations. But I read in the paper, the Corporation Council is saying this and that. But that property line, if it was a building inspector making that determination, it would be made, and you would either go to the zoning board or the planning board, right? What happens to all the property lines up and down Broadway, where you're putting churches in storefronts, next to barrooms, and what, what's going on there? When a guy sells his business a barroom and he wants to get a liquor license, now there's a church next to him, he's got a problem. So what you're doing, I don't know whether you're enforcing codes the way they should be, but they're certainly not the way Bill Hayman and I did it for twenty years. And we didn't have, one of the people here told me, they went up and down Broadway and there's thirty-seven storefronts. They, well, we never had a problem with storefronts being vacant. People were coming and they wanted to move to Kingston. Now, you're driving them out. And.
Well, I'm totally my opinion. The horse here, but property lines are important. We're going to approve this tonight, I guess.
Property lines are important, but it's making the right determination by the right person is just equally important. You need a building inspector, and the building inspector needs the guy making the decision.
Well, then he determines what board it has to go to, and that's why.
And the law is, is there, if he has to go to, you know.
And that's why he's here tonight.
Okay, I know.
We're going to hold a lesson tonight.
I'm going to go polish my guns.
Okay. Anybody else would like to speak on this? Closing the public hearing on item number three. Hello there.
Hello, how are you?
You need to give me a microphone, don't you? Can you state your names for the record, please, gentlemen?
Adam Sawyer.
Chris Zell, from Fumbrine and Larios. So it's the parking lot on the corner that's, uh? It's not on the corner of Grand Street and Pritch Street. It's two lots and, it's adjacent to the building. One lot contains the building and a small parking area to the rear, and the other is the adjacent parking lot. And what we'd like to do is delete the lot line between the two and join them together. Rather simple lot line deletion.
Everything is filled with staff on this rate? Anybody have any questions? All right. Under secret, this is an unlisted action, so determinations of environmental certificates will need to be rendered. I have to form a short environmental assessment before the staff, the staff is distributing it in order. At this time, I make a motion that we approve it by the second. Second by Jonathan Korn, and I used to say that the second, I had to think. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. And at this time, I make a motion that we approve item number three. Board Policy Six needs to be signed, and that's it. On the second one, then?
We need, we want you to do descriptions.
Stand the rear description, you don't want to.
Yes.
Okay. Second by Chuck Valaco on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our second item, the public hearing is item number four, one thirty-one Fair Street. Special permission to operate five roofed bed and breakfast in the existing structure. Section block lot is fifty-six point one hundred and seven dash three dash four. Secret determination, zone R two, it's in the Fair Street Historic District, Ward five. Alicia Edgwalston is the applicant owner. Anybody besides the applicant owner wishing to speak on item number four? See, we have the microphone to close the public hearing on item number four. Does the record show that Miss Edgwalston is here? How are you? Good to see you. Okay, we, this was originally removed in October of 2010, and they're removed annually. Most recent removal is in January of last year. And you're also operating the T-Wood Way in the house, so that's, that's all right? Any, any changes to your, to that?
No.
Okay, this is good?
Put it back.
Okay.
Is your occupancy?
No.
Because we have.
Really? No, I mean, that's, no, but not so many people.
That's, that's why you have a T-Wood, right? Has that been used?
A little. So just to work.
What, can the city do anything to help you to make business better? I mean, are you advertising, are you marketing, or?
You know, so each of these businesses are very different. If it's a better breakfast, the only thing people, you know, that helps is help the internet. This is how it is. With the T-Wood, it's not something that you, you know, people can find on the internet, but I think it's a word of mouth, and the people try to, this kind of stuff. I think rather that that's like, I don't know how many years, but maybe, you know, that's what it's true.
And all the issues that originally surrounded this bigger neighborhood, that's all settled?
This one has disappeared. Disappeared, never happened, you know.
That's good.
Water under the bridge, keep moving, everything is perfect.
I think it's way our goal with the stuff we're making that day, remember that day?
I know, I know, most of this was a man's.
All right, you good?
Yeah.
And somebody says one.
Type two, type two.
Next one, let's move.
Yes.
Everybody's good? Okay, under secret, this is a type two action. Says that no further review of this board is required. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number four, with all original conditions carried forward, and this will be for a period of one year. On the second one, then?
Second.
Second by Robert Jacobson, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Okay, moving on to item number five, we're still in the public hearing. Number eighty-eight Hill Street, in France ninety of Hill Street. Special permission to operate bed and breakfast. Section block lot is fifty-six point forty-three dash five dash four. Secret determination, zone RT, it is in the Ronda Historic District, Heritage Area Commission also. Ward eight, Maria Hendrick, the applicant's owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number five? We'll close the public hearing on item number five, let the record show that Maria Hendrick is here. Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Have things down there?
Right.
Any changes to the operation?
No, everything is the same.
Yeah? Sue, yes, have your eyes on Sue, let's.
It's good.
You advertise on what, Airbnb and?
The Airbnb and the.
I just found it to us. Okay. Okay.
Oh, and I have an on website.
Can you still stand that for us? Have any questions? Okay, under secret, this is a type two. Pre-determined to have no, no change impact, and therefore does not require any additional review by this board at this time. So at this time, I make a motion that we approve item number five, for a period of one year, with all original conditions carried forward. On the second?
Second.
Second by Jonathan Korn, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you very much for seeing you. Item number six, six seventy-two Broadway. Site land, special permitted to establish ground floor commercial space, constructing one-story addition to the rear of the building, and to establish six apartments on the second and third floors. It's section block lot fifty-six point twenty-five dash one dash eighteen. For table?
Yeah, the applicant's requested table.
I don't have to read this whole thing or anything.
Well, you can.
Well, I'm almost done.
Motion to table.
Secret determination, zone C two, mixed-use sole lay district, Heritage Area Commission, Ward five. John Stavros is the applicant, Mona zero zero nine Productions, the corporate is Mona. Do you need to have the public speak on this one or not? Do you have the table?
Uh, you have to, the tenant is here to speak.
Okay, is anybody opposed to speak on item number six, other than the applicant or owner? The applicant's representative, I have those here, the applicant's representative has requested that the, this application be tabled for him, so I'll make a motion that we table it. Second by Robert Jacobson, all in favor? Opposed? Our final item in the public hearing, section. Item number seven is one hundred fourth Smith Avenue. Special permit renewal to establish a seventy-two unit senior housing project with commercial space. Section block lot is forty-eight point eighty-two dash one dash seven. Ward five, seven M two, mixed-use sole lay district. Secret determination, never more than have operations, the owner and purchase associates, Galalsee is the applicant. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number seven? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing on that. Hello, M D?
Hello.
How are you?
Good, nice to see everyone.
Good to see you. You're with Peak Engineering?
Yes.
Is everything the basis same, the same, is this just an extension?
Exactly. There's no changes to the approved plans or any of the conditions that went along with the initial approval, and basically it's a type two action, just because it's administrative at this point, so it doesn't require secret review. Where's your, do you know where the financing is? Kind of in the same spot it was eighteen months ago. It's just kind of still going through the process. Yeah.
What's the number you're looking at? What's the number?
Okay, looking for one year. Good with everybody on that?
How do we?
Jamie, good? Anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. How long is this going to go on? Just, I mean, I know we're working on financing and funding and stuff, but I mean, how long are we going to keep this alive as a board? Because it's been how long now?
Uh, the original one.
Twelve, twelve eleven, it says.
Three years?
Three years.
Oh, sorry, original was in, the end of two thousand.
I don't see any problems with that. I mean, if they come back in twelve months and they're in the same spot, are we just going to keep extending, or what? What's our position?
Well, it's like, just, I know that since the approval, there's nothing that really has changed as far as zoning in the area, or there's nothing has changed with any other requirements as, as far as secret or stormwater, any of those have changed since then, so, you know, I mean, I can see if there's a substantial change in regulations, but just at the point.
No, I, I know we, with Boxwell Avenue, just a couple of months ago, we, that Mike Piaz's property was kind of coming back for a year, and nothing had happened there, so I understand what you're saying. I think that, you know, after this period of time, if we don't see substantial movement, if we do this late, this late, the latest approval for a year, I think we should make it, give it some real good thought, see what direction we want to go. Does that sound good?
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think right now, we have to be fair to the applicant. It's just, you know, it's been extending, I'm hearing, well, we're going to move forward, we get the funding, or we don't get the funding, and I'm just looking for some type of movement forward here.
If, in this period, kind of this one-year period, if no movement has, has taken place, we can require to maybe submit a new application to start that process.
The one thing I would say is that in order for them to go forward with the funding application, they do need at least the local approvals in place.
And I, I totally understand that, but I think I'd like to see some push here.
And in fairness, that's how we, how we approach other applicants that come through too.
Right.
Agreed. And I know this, this, the new, new administration here, this has gotten a shot, you know, from, from the new mayor, I know that Mr. Aaron has been at consultation, so, yeah, so I think that after the year, we can.
You know, even if we have site cleanup or something taking place to kind of transform this property, which right now doesn't really, isn't appealing in the midtown section, considering we've got the shirt factory that's been fixed up, we've got rub cover that's been fixed up, we're talking about, you know, the Broadway corridor, so like to keep just everything in sync in the neighborhood.
Do we know what the police department alarm calls are, the intrusions or vandalism of any kind? The report states there were twenty-one last year.
I'm sorry, I'm not aware of that at all.
Just, you know, if there are intrusions or vandalism, we probably want to figure out a way to curb that, getting vacant and so forth.
Twenty-one in the last year, huh?
No, there were seven, nine of them alarm calls, or twenty-one.
There are alarm calls.
At the, at the Smith Avenue, the, you know.
We have, I don't.
It's usually, but there are a lot of them are alarms.
I know we've had a lot of alarms at the Waste Factory. I don't remember really having a lot of alarms at, recently at, at Val and Geet. They've got some issues repaired, they repaired some of the sections of the.
Yeah, that's John, John.
They're, uh.
With things, you know, this section has wiring for, for any, for intrusion alarms or anything, might be another part of the building.
Right, right. I will ask the owner about that and see if he can address that.
Only if it could be that, the fellow, he told us the alarm, so that went off, was.
Accidental, it could be accidental for it.
Well, I know we were there once when there was power outage in the area, and we sometimes get that with, with some of the businesses, when the power goes back on, then it's, it'll trigger the alarm. Yeah, other than that, so we'll keep an eye on it for, we'll look at it, revisit it in a year's. You can probably, I'm sure you'll pass up to Mr. Aaron, if he serves it before it has.
Definitely.
Also, like we had when the, the building and furnace and Henry was going through the process, Chuck, who's now, was the kind of liaison on that project, he's offered to be the liaison from the board to, to this project, to, would anybody have an objection to, to have him do that? I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. All right, and. I'd just like to see a little movement, like cleanings and stuff, it's just not.
I mean, they still have to go through the, through the staff of all the stuff, I'm just like the.
Right. No, it's good to have a head person, somebody to tie together.
And I will, I will pop into his place.
Oh, he, he's done that, yes, so he's, he's good for that. I think that's a good idea. Okay, we'll do that.
Okay.
All right, so is any, the west, have any, anything else? East, we're good? We're, we're type two here, correct?
Type two.
All right, so.
All original conditions, some general site cleanup, and then we're going to follow up at staff level.
Where's the, where's the, where's this A K F D here? Or is that just a?
Say what? That was a police thing.
Police, definitely.
Yeah.
You said the fire department.
Uh, it's.
Oh, okay.
But I figured for alarms, maybe the fire department. But we're going to, we'll follow up on that at staff level.
All right, so under secret, this is a type two, predetermined to have no environmental impact, no further review of the board is required. At this time, I make a motion that we approve item number seven, for a period of one year. All original conditions carried forward. Staff is going to follow along in nature of the alarm calls that K P D has been experiencing there.
In case of fire.
In case of fire, and we're going to ask the applicant to address some of the site for cleanup, to show some progress on the, on that, on that property, and also we're going to have Board Director Chuck Valaco become the liaison between this board and the applicant. That's our motion, on the second?
Second.
Second by Robert Jacobson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you very much.
Where's Scott? He said he's going to be.
I know.
He's got, got the truck.
I'm going to text the map home one more time. Thank you.
Thank you, good seeing you.
You too.
All right, that closes the public hearing, section. There's got to be a page missing, is there?
Keep moving, man, keep moving.
Okay. You're going to have to use half your tape today. Okay, item number eight is amendment eighty-five, it's number eighty-five and eighty-seven B Street, and Saturday West B Street. It's a request for amendment to approve plan to approve apartment weight. Section block lot is fifty-six point forty-three dash two dash twenty and twenty-one, and fifty-six point forty-three dash two dash ten. Secret determination, so RT, Heritage Area Commission, around that historic district. Ward eight, Tamara Ellen is the applicant, Merle Lawrence is the owner. Are you Tamara?
Yes, I am.
Did I get that right, the last name?
Uh, Tamara Ellen.
Tamara Ellen. Okay. Lovely.
Very close, well done.
I was here to see you the last time.
I don't know if you all remember this from last month.
This is the bed practice, right?
Yes, it is. We talked about, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about the park. We talked about, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about the parking.
Right.
But actually, there are, you know, there are a number of issues with using that vacant lot as parking, so she's actually requesting that the board waive the two extra, or the two parking spots, so she'd be able to provide four out of the six.
Right.
And we are in proximity to that lot at the bottom of Home Street too, so that was...
Remember, we talked about the bollards and the using alleyway, and there were kind of a number of issues, and in order to purchase the building, I think she wants kind of some assurance.
I would love to have that parking issue resolved, if we possibly can.
Yes.
We have just two concerns really about using the lot. One is safety, if we're opening up either end, people will, could possibly be driving through, and the other is really beautification. I know it's a lovely spot now, mature trees, and we really don't want to turn it into a parking lot.
Okay.
Okay, so, all right, Jamie, you get to vote.
I do too, because it's over here.
And you do too, all right.
They're all candidates.
Okay.
Don't get to vote a lot. So we just need a motion or something on this one.
Yeah.
I'm recusing because I work for Westwood. Any questions? I'm in support of you. Any concerns or questions? Good? All right. Why don't I sit next to him?
It's not fair, it's a problem right now.
Okay, all right, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we try to, we approve the parking waiver request due to the proximity of a city or a parking lot. That's a motion, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jamie, as we have Jonathan Korn and Robert Jacobson recusing himself abstaining nationally at this time. Okay, motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay?
Thank you so much.
All right.
He really wants the second.
No, I always, I always prefer to... Have you ever seconded?
I've answered twice. I have these other jobs.
I've heard of it. We were proud of John. I've heard him make sure of it. A lot of people, I should be damned if he's evil.
Bill Warren, do I get serious? Will remember, and we'll see. All right, our final item, the gentleman tonight is election of officers. James Nambus, for a couple of years, my colleagues asked for this. Be that a debate, it's for chairman and vice chairman. If you'll have me, I'm so interested in being the chairman. And John, are you so interested in?
Yes.
Okay, I'm your vice chairman.
So we need motions.
Can we, any of us do it? Can I make a motion that we be chairman and John be vice chairman, please? I'll second that motion. If I can, I can.
You can, you can. Because he can...
Unless Robert...
Sorry.
We have a motion by Jonathan, the second by Jonathan, to have myself continue as chairman and John Martin Jr. as vice chairman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I believe we're carried.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we done?
Actually, actually, you could have seconded.
Pardon?
You could have seconded that motion. You could, you two, you have to recuse yourselves.
I didn't even say yes or no, so...
Right?
Oh, that's true. You're absolutely right.
So Phil Tobbie will be the second on that one.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thanks. What do you do? What do you do?
All right.
We're just doing the numbers to make sure.
Clark, you have anything else you got to address today? Good?
Does anyone else want me to...
Do you want to vote for anything?
I have to let you know.
They have to lie as to why you gotta...
Okay. Okay. Go to that solar, and...
Who's going to be at the solar?
What you do, honey?
I am.
I'll be there.
I will be.
Oh, wait, is that during spring break? That's during my spring break, is it? Hold on. What spring break?
I think he does all...
Well, we're definitely getting it.
Up to date.
I can now be all three that have been signed, so if you didn't get...
Give me one second.
The Oval Office.
Yeah, his dad.
Yes.
I took care of mine.
Right, I know you did.
I might go to that.
I mean, you can sign yourself, but it doesn't matter, I'm just gonna...
Jenny?
But, I mean, it's a good, it looks like it's gonna be a good time.
So, yeah.
You'll be there?
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Robert Jacobson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Six forty.